Good evening, everybody. Today is July 17th, and this is a regular city Moscow City Council meeting. Walter?
Would you please rise and join the mayor and council with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Just a quick announcement before we get into the consent agenda. There will not be an executive session this evening for everybody that's here. With that, I'll move on to the consent agenda.
May we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Catherine, a second by Gina, to approve the consent agenda as it is. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, we will move on to the next item. Staff recognition report, Gary. Do we have anything tonight, sir?
There's no report tonight, sir.
Okay. Item number three, mayoral's appointment. I do have one for council's consideration this evening. Sharon Masoudi for the Historic Preservation Commission expiration expires 12/31/2019. Would entertain a motion from-
I would move approval of the nomination.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Art and a second by Jim to approve Sharon Masoudi for the Historic Preservation Commission. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay. Sharon, are you here by chance? If you are, please stand up. If you would like to, you don't have to. You can introduce yourself. If you want to come up here and speak for a few minutes, we appreciate anybody that joins our commissions.
Okay, well, I'm just representing Sharon.
Oh, you are? Okay, well, that's her e- Oh, well, Wendy, come on over here. That shows you how good my eyesight is. I couldn't spot you that far away. So, tell us about your twin here, Wendy.
Now, Sharon is about 23 or 24 years old. Sharon is a graduate student in the Architecture Program at U of I, and she comes from Iran. She's very interested in historic preservation there, so you can imagine she's used to dealing with centuries, probably a lot longer back in history than we do here. But at any rate, we're really excited to have a student member, but once again, back on the commission, and also to have youthful energy and also the perspectives of international, the world that she brings to us, so.
Oh, we love that. And I want to brag a little bit on you, Wendy, because Wendy, she is the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Planning and Zoning, and she serves on two commissions, does a wonderful job, so we appreciate your service. It's always kind of fun kidding you a little bit, so.
Oh, okay, well, I'm glad I look like Sharon. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Okay, the next thing that we have is our public comment and mayor's response period for 15 minutes, and this is where the general public get up and speak to us, as long as it is not something on this evening's agenda, or in front of the Board of Adjustment, or Planning and Zoning. So if you would like, please come up. We'll give you three minutes, state your name and your address, and you're welcome to say what's on your mind. Okay, seeing nobody rush this summer evening to the podium, I'm going to move on to the Citizens' Commission report for the Human Rights Commission with Chief Jim Frye, as well as Ken Fons. So, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for allowing us to present the annual report for the Human Rights Commission. Ken Fons, the board chair, will present, and thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, Ken.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert, City Council members. So, I was going to go quickly through what we've done since the last time, more or less, that we were here, plus some of the things that we're planning in the near future as part of this. So, busy year, as usual, and so on the social justice education forums that we held, we held one on gender shaming and sex education in April of 2016. Natalie Greenfield did the talk on that one, and it was a very, very fascinating, very disturbing topic that has been going on, and so she delved into that. We also did an education forum on religious shield laws in Idaho and children's rights, taking a look at the Idaho laws that gives a religious exemption to mainly one church in Idaho that does faith healing, which has a lot of children's deaths, and most states have done away with those laws or adjusted them. Idaho has not, so they're protected. If average parent didn't take their child to the doctor, they would be held liable. This group are exempt from other laws that everybody else is, and so we did an educational forum, bringing in a couple speakers on that. One of them is a survivor of the religious group, and so she had siblings that died and others as part of this. We also did an education forum under pressure examining white masculinity. This was done in conjunction with University of Idaho sociology class on diversity and social stratification, and so the students actually presented all of the material, researched all the material and all of that. And so we really like it when we can partner up, especially giving the students the chance to run everything. And so they planned it all, they ran it all, and so we were just there as kind of guidance, and that was about it. Now, other activities that we participated in over the year, we participated in Palouse Pride in August of 2016, and we have our booth set up there, and we do that every year. We mark, the Human Rights Commission walks in the march, as well as has a booth set up at the Pride Festival. We also sponsored and participated in the MLK Human Rights Breakfast in January, which several of you were at it, and so, and Mayor Lambert, you probably remember since you spoke at it and introduced the thing. Yeah, and so we always participate in that-
It's always a good time, too, Ken. There's a huge crowd, I don't know how many people we have there.
Yeah, I don't know. This year was a record year, as you can see here. They had to set up extra tables in the back because there were so many people that were attending this time around, so that was, it was really good showing on this one. We also partnered with the Upstanders Group, the New Upstanders Group, to do an Upstanders Bystander Training in January, where what to do when you see harassment, bullying, things of that nature, how to stand up, say something, do something safely. And Chief Frye spoke at that, the fire chief did as well, and then Alternatives to Violence of the Palouse joined with us on that one to put it together. So it was a joint effort between a lot of different groups, and we had a really big turnout. The 1912 Great Room was packed. It was standing room only, and as part of it also, it was a really good turnout on that one. The Human Rights Commission participated in the Women's March in January as well. January was a busy month.
That had a record.
Yeah, that was a record. In fact, that's the largest crowd I've ever spoken to, at over 2,600 people, so, you know, I'm used to, you know, 100 students perhaps, maybe a couple hundred people, but so that was quite a different experience, with that many people. I couldn't even see them all, so. We also participated in the Beyond the Band, the pro-immigration rally that held at East City Park, smaller than the Women's March, but still a really good turnout with close to 800 people at that one, and so, so that was a really good one as well. We showed a movie at the Kenworthy from Selma to Stonewall, and the idea was taking a look at the civil rights movement in Selma and the Stonewall riots, which launched the LGBT rights movement, and what they had in common, and it was a real interesting movie with a good turnout, and then we did a discussion afterwards over at the One World. That was well-attended as well. We are still participating with Add the Words Idaho as much as we can here. Things have been rather quiet lately on that front, and because the bill hasn't made it out of committee, and so, you know, everybody's going to try again, once it comes back up again, and so we'll see what happens there. And if you're not familiar with Add the Words, it's adding, basically doing for Idaho what Moscow has already done with our anti-discrimination policy of adding sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression to the discrimination. So Moscow's already done it, as a few other cities in Idaho have, but Idaho as a whole does not have it. We have been doing the Human Rights Commission at the market on several times, in May, August of last year, and then May again this year, and we'll have another one coming up, but basically, we just table at the market, give information, talk to people about human rights, what we do, these types of things, to try to get a better presence in the community so that more and more people know that we're here and what we do, because it's getting better, but I still find people that go, what's the Human Rights Commission, and what do you do? And so we want to get out there as much as we can to do that. We're still participating in the Northwest Coalition for Human Rights, and we are getting that off the ground again. It went on a hiatus for a while, because basically, we put everything in the one office at the University of Idaho under Carmen Suarez. Some of you remember Carmen. Well, she left, and when she did, they broke her office apart and restructured it at UI, which meant our support kind of vanished. And so now, we're doing it separately. We're setting up a new website with the coalition and redoing the membership, so that it's not tied to one entity. It's standalone. That was our mistake. We tied it to an office, and administrations changed, things changed. So, we're not going to do that anymore. So, that's basically all of the things that we did. We'll have the Northwest Coalition for Human Rights website up here soon, where it's being designed right now, so that will be up soon, and so I'll let everyone know once that's up, and so you can go check it out. But upcoming activities, so what we've got planned coming up, we will participate once again in the Pride Festival in August and the March. We've already paid our booth fee and are ready to go on that one, so we'll do that once again. This September, we are planning a series of events for Inclusive Communities Month, and it's really Racial Equality and Inclusive Communities Month, but we're using the inclusive community part of it mostly right now. And so we plan on having an event every week in September, and so we'll start off with a movie on refugees, and the theme this year is on refugees, and so Movie After Spring, which is about, whoops, I thought I had a photo of it, but we'll find out in a minute. It'll probably pop up late. The movie is about a group of filmmakers who went into one of the refugees, Syrian refugee camps, and filmed everything that was going on there and so forth, and so we'll start off with that. Then we're going to do a panel of refugees, so there are going to be individuals who are on the Palouse. We have several students at UI and WSU who are refugees, and so they're going to be speaking of their personal experiences and things of that nature. Then we'll have a speaker on refugees, so we'll bring in an expert to do a social justice forum. And then we're going to close it at the end of the month with an inclusive communities potluck at the 1912. So we're just going to hold a large potluck. Everybody comes and brings food. We'll have a little bit of food there. I'm in contact with a lot of the student groups at UI, the international student groups, and so hopefully, a number of them will come with food, dishes from their home countries, and we'll just, everyone will just get together and have dinner together, basically, to end the month as this inclusive community. And also on that same day, earlier in the day, we're partnering with the Leta Human Rights Task Force, which we do often, for Human Rights Day at the Market. That's on the Saturday. The potluck is in the evening on the Saturday. Their theme is on refugees again, you know, stories of refugees, so we'll be doing basically the whole month dealing with refugees and refugee issues. This year, coming up in November, will be the Ismat Manan Sheik Community Unity Award again. It's time again. We do this every other year, and so the Arts Commission was last year, so we're up this year. And so we will be sending out soon information, press releases. The City Supervisor's Office will send those out, and we'll be setting all of this up to take nominations for the award, which the mayor then will present, once we get it all established. So we'll be doing that again in November. We'll participate in January once again with the MLK Human Rights Breakfast, like we always do, so we help sponsor it and join the Leta Human Rights Task Force to do that. Also, we're helping and support a unity festival. As many of you know, the Community Walk went away, mainly because there was myself and one other person on the planning committee anymore, and I said, I'm not going to plan it by myself anymore, and I'm done, and so once that happened, it went away, which is probably signifies that there might not have been much support anymore for it if you couldn't find enough people to fill the committee. And so it went away, but there's been quite a few people that have been wanting to get something going again. And so Natalie Greenfield, and she's working with several other groups, in August of this next year, are going to have a unity festival in early August, and so it's based on the Community Walk idea. It just won't be a walk. It will be at East City Park, a big festival with food and music and booths set up and so forth, so another, you know, inclusive community type event. And so they'll be planning that, but we'll be supporting them on it. I told them I was more than happy to support them 100%, but I would not be planning any of it, so. I'm busy enough as it is, and my wife keeps telling me to stop saying yes. So, we're also, in the fall of 2018, going to be holding the next Finding the Center Action-Oriented Human Rights Conference, and so we're just starting the planning of that now. In fact, we're meeting this week to launch the planning, to put it all together, figure out what we want to do, and we're hoping this year that WSU will join us, and we may hold it on WSU campus instead of UI campus this time around, because we've been wanting more participation from them, and so we're hoping this year that we'll be able to get it. And so we'll be helping run that as well, and organize that, so that'd be in probably October, but we don't have the set date yet in 2018. And that is it, at least through that point.
Okay, Ken, I always thank you for your enthusiasm and hard work that you personally do, because you're constantly doing things and keeping the ball rolling for human rights, which is really a big thing for our entire area, and so I'm very proud of that, and you've got a great commission you work with, and Chief Frye, our liaison, our city liaison. Chief, you got anything you'd like to comment with? Ken, for a second, then I'll turn over to your council for any-
No, I think the biggest thing is, is it is a very active group, and they're out there and really representing the human rights, and just the events that are getting bigger and bigger. We were a little shocked on the police side with the Women's March. We'd prepared for about 300 and had 2,300, so we'll be a little bit more prepared in the future for that, but it is a great commission, and it's a noble cause.
You know, that Women's March, and I talked to several of the organizers, and they had no idea that that many people, so it's pretty amazing, really.
Yeah, it overwhelmed just about everybody, I think, yeah.
Amazing, but anyway, thank you so much. Ken, council have any question? Art?
Just want to point out that for those who are interested, the commission meets tomorrow.
Yes, if you want to sit in.
Yep. Very nice. So tomorrow at-
At 4:00.
4:00 o'clock downstairs in the conference room.
Yes, and you're going to be there, right?
Yes, I am. I'm the council liaison.
We're an open meeting, so anybody can come in that wants. Right now, we are full. All of our seats are full. We have a high school member.
That's great.
We have a college member. We have a county representative, so we are-
It's good to have a college representation and high school representation. That makes it pretty neat, too. Well, thank you so much for the report, Ken.
All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number six, which is the public hearing on the Palouse Prairie Edition Preliminary Platte. Michael Ray, you have the podium. You're all browned up, and your summer's been treating you well, so how's things going, Mike?
Doing well, Your Honor. So thank you, Your Honor, council members. Before you tonight, we have a public hearing for the Palouse Prairie Edition Preliminary Platte, and this is at the request of the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust. So just to familiarize yourself, the property is outlined in red at the center of your screen, 3.69 acres. You've got Palouse River Drive there, heading east-west. You see in the southern portion of your screen here, Sunnyside Avenue provides access to this property. You currently have two terminuses of Sunnyside Avenue, currently doesn't connect, although it's been platted through the Anderson First Edition, so you can see the right-of-way lines there. One terminus here to the north, and one terminus there to the south. You have a subdivision that went through a planned unit development recently, and that's Prospect Place Edition, which is all single-family dwellings here to the southwest. To the west, you have Anderson Frontier Park, primarily single-family dwellings within the Anderson First Edition to the north, and then you have Gritman Wellness Center to the east of your screen, some vacant property to the southeast, and then on the south side of Palouse River Drive, you have some mobile home parks, as well as ITD's maintenance yard. Just a closer view of the property, see Prospect Place to the southwest and Sunnyside connecting there. This is a topography map. Every line represents a two-foot elevation change, so as you can see, as you head further to the north, the elevation increases, and you're looking at about 10% to 14% slopes on this property. So the proposals for the subdivision of 3.69 acres, you have a combination of the R3, which is medium-density residential, and R4, which is multiple-family residential, which go across this property. Proposals for 13 lots, which range from around 2,000 square feet in size to 2.36 acres in size, including within that, or two clusters of four townhouses totaling eight townhouse lots. You have two flag lots, as well as just two standard internal lots. And then there is one larger 2.36-acre lot, which was previously approved earlier this year for Palouse Prairie Charter School to relocate there. Looking at the comp plan designation, currently designated as auto-urban residential. Anderson First to the north, as well as Prospect Place to the southwest, currently designated as neighborhood conservation. You do have some urban residential to the southeast, as well as on the south side of Palouse River Drive. Anderson Frontier Park is currently designated as parks and open space. And then the Gritman Wellness Center, you have designated as auto-urban commercial. So looking at what the auto-urban residential comp plan designation says, it's low to moderate density residential uses. We generally see about three to seven dwelling units per acre within that designation. It calls for a mixture of single-family, townhome, and limited multifamily, and then it points to appropriate zoning districts, which are the R1, R2, and R3 zones. Sunnyside is designated as a local neighborhood street, and Palouse River Drive, further to the south, is designated as a minor arterial. So this is the zoning configuration of the area. Like I mentioned previously, there's two zones that encompass this property. To the north, you have the R3 zone, which is medium-density residential, and then you've got the multifamily R4 zone to the south. So all those properties to the south, as well as the Gritman Wellness Center, is R4. Properties to the north, including Anderson Frontier Park, to the west, are low-density, single-family zone. And then on the south side of Palouse River Drive, that's motor business. So looking at the R3, provides for increase over the density allowed by R2, mainly because it provides or allows different types of housing construction. So usually appropriate where activity levels are moderate, terrain permits construction of somewhat larger structures, and where you have the public systems and neighborhood facilities that can accommodate really a greater intensity of land use. And then just a wide variety of residential within the R3, so we allow single-family, two-family, twin-home, and townhouse dwellings. Minimum lot size varies by the type of dwelling. Single-family at 6,000 square feet, a two-family dwelling, so duplex, is 7,000. Twin homes, 3,250. Townhouses, 2,000. And then we do have a special density restriction on townhouse lots within the R3. They can go all the way down to 2,000 square feet, but a total townhouse development can exceed 14 and 1/2 dwelling units per acre. And then the minimum lot width for single and two-family, 60. Twin homes, 30, and townhouses is 20. Looking at the R4 zone, really our most intense residential zone, usually applied where activity levels are high, and we have the adequate public facilities to accommodate that development, so usually near University of Idaho or Central Business District, and then adequate transportation is given high priority when we're looking at rezoning these areas to R4. And then, as with R3, there's a wide variety of residential uses allowed in the R4 zone. The distinction is that we allow multifamily residential, as well as professional offices up to 2,000 square feet in size. And then going through the minimum lot size requirements, so single through multifamily, it's 5,000 square feet or 800 square feet per dwelling, whichever's greater. Twin homes, 2,250. Townhouses, 1,800. So you have a little bit smaller lot sizes with the R4 zone than you do the R3. Minimum lot width, single through multi, is 50 feet. Twin homes, 25. Townhouses, 18. And brings us to the proposed preliminary subdivision platte. So you can see Sunnyside, current terminus here, extends through to the other terminus here to the south. We've got Pearl Circle, which is Prospect Place Edition. This is the larger 2.36-acre piece, where conditional use permit was approved earlier this year for Palouse Prairie Charter School. And then you have the townhouse clusters, so these would be four townhouse lots on the west, and then four townhouse lots on the east, and then these are the flagpole lots here and here, so you've got the narrow corridor that gives way to the larger flaglot area there to the north, and then you have just two standard internal lots there to the northeast. So 13 parcels, 2.36 acres. Like I mentioned, Palouse Prairie Charter School had approval earlier this year. The townhouse lots, we've got the two sets of four. The westernmost are primary in the R4 zone. So looking at the average lot size, those are around 2,700 square feet with a total density of 15.6 units per acre. Easternmost is primarily within the R3 zone. We've got average lot sizes for those, which are a little bit bigger. They're about 3,200 square feet with a total density of 13.3 dwelling units per acre, and they meet that 14 and 1/2 dwelling unit per acre limitation, more importantly, on those lots. And then just for comparison, if we looked at the total combined townhouse development, comes in about average lot size, a little over 3,000 square feet, and then the total density is 14.4 units per acre, so even if we looked at the combination of the entire development, they're still under the 14 and 1/2 dwelling unit limitation there. Street network, Sunnyside is already platted, and that was part of Anderson First Edition. Like I mentioned previously, it's a local neighborhood street. We do have a current active development agreement. When the last phase of Anderson First subdivision was extended, it requires Sunnyside to be constructed prior to any building permits to be issued on that property. And then the Sunnyside will be constructed to the improvements that were required at the time the Anderson First subdivision was approved. So really just curb, gutter, tree lawn, sidewalk, only on the north side, and then just curb and gutter on the south side of the street. So Anderson First, the distinction between what was approved back then and now is usually have sidewalks on both sides of the street, and back then, it was only required to be on one side. So that's the standard that they're still held to. Water system, and that's proposed to be extended along the Sunnyside Avenue alignment. We do have existing mains on those current terminuses of Sunnyside. Looking at the 2012 Conference of Water System Plan, Public Works has looked at the data within that plan and found that the existing system has adequate potable and fire flows. Sanitary and storm sewer, those mains are proposed to extend from that northeast terminus of Sunnyside down to the southwest, along the sunny side of alignment. We do have existing mains in Sunnyside near the intersection of Pearl Circle, which is the Prospect Place private street, and then Public Works also looked at the comprehensive sewer system plan, and they determined that the existing system is adequate to serve the additional flow that could be generated from any use within this development. Parkland has already been satisfied. That was, met the requirements in the Anderson Frontier subdivisions. We had Anderson Frontier Park to the west, and so no further dedications required since- it was already required of the Anderson First subdivision. Planning and zoning did conduct a public hearing, and that happened on June 14th this year, and they recommended approval with no conditions. Stat's recommendation for the council is to conduct a public hearing and upon, upon the proposed Palouse Prairie addition plat, and upon consideration of any testimony presented, approve the preliminary plat for Palouse Prairie addition and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Before we open the public hearing, questions for Mike Ray. Walter?
Mike, would you go back to one of the maps? I think it's, what I'm looking for is on any one of them. It's got the subdivision immediately south.
Like an aerial map?
Yes, that would work. The one you just passed would have worked.
Okay.
The subdivision immediately south of the property we're talking about tonight has what appears to be a vacant lot in the northwest corner. Is that, is that just an undeveloped lot that's already platted for that subdivision?
It is already platted.
I've never noticed it before.
Yeah, there's currently a home on there. So, our imagery is from 2012, so that's the reason.
Okay.
The only vacant lots are actually these corner, the two lots here on the corner of Sunnyside and Palouse River Drive. But, yeah, that was a home that was constructed either last year or the year before.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Mike? Okay, Mike, thank you. I will open the public hearing at 7:32 here from the applicant. And please state your name and address for us, even though we all know who you are, Nils.
Nils Peterson, Director for the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust, 841 Trevoy. Thank you, Mike, for a fine presentation. I'll take any questions that you have. I have nothing specific for you, and my engineer could not be here tonight, so I get the whole of it done.
Okay. Art?
One small one. The northwest corner of the subdivision has the two flagpole lots in it and is zoned R3, but it backs off to...
Northeast.
No, the northwest with the two flagpole lots...
Oh, okay.
...abutting into the R1 area. Yeah, those two guys. Is lower density planned there to ease a transition between R3 and R1 existing neighborhood up in there? Kind of like, is there any vision for what occurs on those two larger lots?
We have no, no plan or no anticipated plan for what will be built on those lots.
Also, relative to two, I don't know if it's, my memory fails me at this point, but between, probably for you, Bill, but between two different densities of zoning, is that strictly a commercial thing where buffering is required landscape, or does that apply to residential areas?
Your Honor?
Yes.
It does apply to residential areas depending upon the difference in intensity of the residential zoning districts.
So, between R3 and R1, there might be buffering stipulated? I can't remember.
Give me one moment, and I can tell you. If you have any other questions, feel free, and I can get back with you on that shortly.
Well, that was the extent of mine.
Okay, other questions before...
Well, I wanted to follow the same line of questioning that Art had with the flagpole lots, because I was hoping for more understanding, because that passage to get to those lots could be, you know, crowded. So, I was just kind of wondering what was going to happen, what were you hoping was going to happen there maybe on those lots?
So, those are a standard width that is required for a flagpole?
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm not questioning that, just kind of, just because of the design, just curious mostly.
And I have no specific use to tell you, any use that could be put on that many square feet. There's one other thing that Mike didn't mention. It's an interesting restriction in this, on this parcel, which is maximum building height is one-story, not inclusive of a daylight basement. So, that puts some interesting design constraints on what you can do. The slope of the hill helps tremendously to make a daylight front.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, did you have an answer for...
Yes, there is no buffer yard required between the R1 and R3 zone districts. You would have to get to the R4 zoning district before a buffer is required.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Nils.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'll take other testimony in favor of this preliminary plat, please. Well, please come up, ma'am, and how we do this is we ask you to state your name and address, and we go from there.
Okay. I'm Beth Crey, and I live in Prospect Place, so that's south of the development that's going. And I'm 20...
Could you please give us your address, ma'am?
I'm 2075 Sunnyside Avenue, number eight.
Okay.
So, I'm concerned about those two lots also that are above, and they have those...
The two flagpole lots you were referring to?
Yeah, the two flagpole lots. If this is affordable housing, I don't see how it's going to be affordable to maintain those long driveways that are there. And it seems like that's not real conducive to the type of, you know, development that he's trying to make there with affordable housing. And it seems like instead of having two lots in the back, that he could push those four that are in the middle, they could go more to the, kind of, northeast, and then he could have a lot that goes further back. He could have 12 lots instead of 13 lots. And he doesn't really know what he's going to do with those two lots in the back. So, I'm concerned about that, how that's going to become affordable housing in the long run someday. Maybe those would never get developed. So, those are concerns I have.
Thank you. We're going to ask for others to come up and speak, and then we'll have the applicant come back up. So, now I'll take any other general testimony, or for or against, or just general comment. Well, Nils, I'll let you, if you want to come back up and tell us what you think, would be fine.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the citizen input. The question before you is a specific plating question.
That's correct.
And not a question of how the plat, how the lots will be developed.
That is correct.
So, I have no need to address any particular plans.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other testimony? Well, I will shut this public hearing then, 7:38, and let council address it.
I'll go.
Okay, go ahead, Art.
Yeah, I think Moscow does have a demonstrated need for affordable housing and anything that can be done to provide more housing of an affordable nature, and I'm not quite sure where the cutoff for unaffordable and not actually occurs, but if it can be put up with twin-home configurations, I think that's a great thing, and anything we can do to help with that is a great idea. Also, the fact that they're limited to one story plus a daylight basement should help mitigate any impact for the existing R1 division above it. And overall, I think if it can be a subdivision that gets up and running, I'm all in favor of it. I think it looks quite well laid out and should fit in with the existing neighborhoods and provide some additional housing.
Kathy?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. I think that, knowing the daylight, that's the question I was asking after seeing the topography. I just couldn't understand, you know, kind of what, what was going to, kind of feel like it was going to jam in there, just out of trying to figure out how you were thinking. So, that clarified it. So, thanks for that.
Mr. Mayor, I see no problem with this, and therefore I would move that we approve the preliminary plat for Palouse Prairie addition and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Jim and a, or by Jim and a second by John to approve the preliminary path plat for Palouse Prairie addition and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria. Further discussion? Start to roll with Walter. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moved on. Thank you very much. It passed. Thank you, Nils. With that, that is towards the end of our meeting, so we'll go into reports, and I'll start with Jim.
Well, Administrative Committee was canceled last week, and I didn't attend the Works Finance Meeting because I was involved in a work issue that didn't allow me to get away. So, somebody else can report on that, but the only item on that agenda was, or was on the regular agenda and the consent agenda today was the 1912 Senator Roofley replacement rejection of the bid. So, nothing too earth-shaking happened there, I don't think.
Okay, I'll move on to Art.
Yeah, Kim discussed the Human Rights Commission and what it's up to, and the fact that there's a meeting on that one tomorrow, so I'll have another report then. Tree Commission met on June 6th and discussed several aspects of partnering with Avista to do not only tree trimming, but potentially tree removal in some of the problem areas that exist within town, and then even replacement of the trees that are there. So, the Commission is interacting more with Avista on that one to see what can be done to maintain a mixed-age tree canopy in town. Also revisiting the new tree plantings in existing subdivisions, getting the trees planted in the tree lawns so that they can actually live up to their name, and that's a goal of the group. Also, the replacement of the declining trees, which sort of devolves from the work with Avista. How do we get rid of declining trees, get some new ones planted, so we don't suddenly have any trees of reasonable height or shade, so we can keep the urban canopy going the way it is? So, they're putting in a lot of work on those, generating brochures for people on how to plant and care for their trees out in the public right-of-ways.
All right. There you go. Thank you. Walter?
Yes, sir. While I was down at the Association of Idaho Cities meeting in Boise on June the 22nd, the Municipal Water Users Group that I'm a member of, the Association of Idaho Cities, held a joint meeting with the Association's Environment Committee, discussed several issues regarding water and environment, and planned that there'll be a conference call meeting for the Municipal Waters Group on August 30. They continue to work on issues primarily in southeast Idaho. When you go to these state meetings, everything revolves around the Snake River Plain problem. The reason that I'm interested and belong to that is to make sure that they don't go off and do something that would either impact us negatively or would do something that we wouldn't know was coming without being aware of it. So, it's primarily a sit and listen and pay attention type thing regarding impacts on municipalities' water, water calls, water rights, and those things. There have been two planning and zoning meetings since the council last met. They continue to go through revisions to the zoning code, the comprehensive plan updates, slowly working their way through those, and those will ultimately be coming to council. At the last meeting, Les McDonald spent hour and a half-plus going over the reasons why the comprehensive plan recommends that D and third be minor arterials and sixth be a collector, if I get it right. And the planning and zoning commissioners were questioning why. It seems like, from Les's explanation, it's a distinction without much of a difference on existing streets. It comes into play when you're building new streets in the community. The planning and zoning group did not have a motion put forth to recommend either acceptance or changing, so stay tuned. They will apparently take it back up again. That's the second discussion they've had about it, so they're, they're... I'm waiting for them to come to a recommendation. Let's leave it at that. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Walter. Kathy?
I was going to say, Walter, when I was liaison last year, they were still talking about that issue. So, they're still gathering, it seems like, information about that designation, so it will come, I know, eventually. All right, I went to, Fire Department meets once a month, and they are making improvements on Station One and making it work with the budget. They also are thinking about doing a scholarship fund to get kids more involved in school, so they would, they would make something available for volunteers, kids, so people that work with the Fire Department. And then, they've talked about, they've already had a 10% increase from this time last year, so they've had over 1,200 calls, and that it takes about 13 minutes. The chief went through a big document about, to get to a call and how long it takes us to respond with the volunteers. So, they had a good conversation about that and addressing all those things. They will be available, and they're going to be at the Ice Cream Social that the Historic Preservation is doing on July 30th. So, they'll bring an engine, and so, it's also, the next night is National Night Out, August 1st, and so they're going to be participating in that. And then the 125-year celebration's coming up in September. So, that's what's happening with the Fire Department. And then, on July 11th and 12th, I went to the mental health first aid training, and there were 20 people. It's provided by the University of Idaho, and there were people from as far away as Cavendish, and they, they give it almost monthly, and it's helping people understand the major disorders and how to respond. And they also do it with police departments.
Okay, very good. Gina?
Okay, I was the lucky winner of the Public Works Finance Chair position, and I thought it was riveting, actually. It was kind of exciting.
She did a great job.
I was, I was a little shaken in my boots, but, and we did cover all of that. The Pathways and the Sustainable Environment Commission, Pathways met last week, and the Sustainable Environment will meet tomorrow evening, kind of going down their agenda, things that we want to consider and discuss and think about bringing forward. And then, the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee will meet on Thursday, and we're working right now. It's step two and a half of getting our alternative water supply report out to the world. So, it's pretty exciting.
Good. John?
The only thing I had was the building code meeting, and for health reasons, I wasn't able to attend, so I can't give you much of a report.
Okay, John, thank you. On 6/28, I had an airport board meeting. We discussed a lot of things, kind of interesting, and we'll have another board meeting a week from Friday. One of the things coming up on that quickly is I'll be making a trip into Seattle in September. Sometime I'll be talking about possibilities of the terminal, what the FAA will help us with, hopefully, so I'll have more information on that coming up in the next couple of months. Walter, I'm glad to hear the P&amp;Z is working on a comprehensive plan rewrite, and I'm bringing that forward.
Look forward to it.
Look forward to some kind of report on that, so that'll be good. And I wanted to share, we did a kickoff at the Runaway of the Park on last Thursday night on the 35th one, which was just terrific. Jim and Jim could actually give a better report on that than I can, because I was there that one evening, but I was doing all kinds of other stuff, but I know some of my family was there as well, so it was a very nice event.
It was very well attended this year. We had probably, probably some of the biggest crowds we've had ever. The weather was perfect. I think it was financially very successful this year. I don't have exact numbers for you, but it was, it was a great event, and 35th anniversary was a big success.
So much fun.
Thanks, everybody that's involved in that. I could give you a huge report. I've been to all 35 of them, and I think I've, I've been on the board for 20 years at least, so I could tell you a lot about it, but I'm sure you'll be bored with it before I get halfway through.
Thanks, Jim. Gary, do you have anything to add before we...
Just making a note of the quarterly regional breakfast meeting that we all attended, where Dr. Rob Spear gave a report on the Arena Project at the University of Idaho and a status on that. I was happy to attend the Idaho State Bar Convention, which was held in Moscow for the first time in well over, I heard, 70 years when I was up there. So, happy, very pleased that the Idaho State Bar had that convention here for the first time in that long. We hope to have them back again. It was a great convention.
Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Entertained. Second. All in favor? Aye. opposed? May I ask 7:50? Thank you, everybody.[1787.48]